We need to look with fresh eyes and see what we can.
Fresh eyes on downers, twice as many as small, what now?
Tell the meeting to order. Roll call Alderman.
Heisler.
Here.
Hitzel.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Ridgewood.
Here.
Anthony.
Here.
Davidson.
Here.
Silsby.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Cybert.
Here.
White.
Here.
Gledney.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Orland.
Here.
Schneider.
Here. Roll call department heads.
Police Chief Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Langston.
Here.
City Attorney Kara Warner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Matron.
Here.
Tim Redwoods.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer.
Ob Sabo.
Here.
Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer who may get here. He had a situation he's handling for us. And also, I excuse Jim Schneider this evening. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand and join me in the plights of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the glory of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have no public hearing this evening and we have public participation. I'll open that up now. If anyone would like to address the council, I ask that you come after I recognize you, give your name and address at the microphone and please try to keep it to two to three minutes. Is anyone this evening? Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, 125 East Seal Lane, Shiloh, Illinois. You know, for the last 25 years or so, this city has written thousands and thousands of tickets to people for just being at a residence. It was never in the ordinance until about February of this year. Thousands of tickets, thousands of people took off work to go to court. Most of them pled guilty before they got in because they were scared. Never in the ordinance. In February, the city added it to an ordinance. And I guess the question is for Mr. Horner. How is a reasonable person of even minimal intelligence supposed to know?
My word. My word. Nobody in public participation, in my understanding, addresses any individual. And anyway, so public participation, he asked, well, it's not direct.
You've got two minutes, two, three minutes to make a statement. You don't have to be, this is not, I told you before, this is not question and answer.
Apparently there's no question and answer anywhere. Okay. A reasonable person would never know that the ordinance was changed. You can't, they stick it on a wall on a headboard up at the clerk's office for 10 days. Doesn't matter what the ordinance is, it has to be occupancy on this. When they add it in, that each individual person has to be listed on the occupancy permit that resides there. Go to the website because the website shows the ordinances as of October of 2012. And unless somebody comes down and goes to the clerk's office and asks to look at an ordinance to see if an ordinance exists, which doesn't make any sense, he gets a ticket and a person would get a ticket for just visiting. I mean, that's downright un-American. These tickets keep getting written. People don't know about the law. It's not on the website. It's never been reported in the newsletter. How would anybody know that it's against the law to visit somebody and, or in a particular case that dealt with my property, an ex-wife went to visit a daughter that she didn't have, she had visitation rights. They got divorced. Her name was taken off the occupancy permit. She comes to see the daughter, which she's allowed to on divorce decree, and he gets a ticket and she gets a ticket. This stuff's insane. Nobody has, there's no reasonable person that would ever know that that was amended even though thousands of tickets were written before then and it wasn't the law. How is anybody supposed to know that this even existed? It's not on the website. It's nowhere.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Back in the corner.
Scott Brown, 18th South, 29th Street, Shiloh, Illinois. Jillian Schneider and our article in the paper yesterday, some moron with an Alderman made some snarky comment.
Call it, call it. Okay.
Name calling.
I didn't call you a name. You must feel guilty.
It don't have to be calling anybody.
You're not directing it. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Lantner, when you start talking about some snarky Alderman, we've said how many times, and we're going to have this refined real soon, we're going to keep this simple and we're not going to start with accusations of name calling or painting the picture of somebody's actions right away. Tell us what's on your mind. Keep it straightforward and simple and simple.
I got a thing here I wrote down. Unintended consequences. Lindenwood confiscates a Bobo Zinkus in his wife's house and he had one week to move out and people are stealing it not from his yard sale. His wife took most of the money from the house and he is totally upset and kills his wife's parents and shoots off the bro. Sometimes a situation is basically out of control. I think in lieu of all that, this is a little, I think that in lieu of all that, Lindenwood is doing for Belleville after Lindenwood builds new dorm across West Main, Belleville should show its appreciation and build for the students an overhead bridge across West Main so as not to endanger students going to it from school.
You have a good point, Mr. Lantner. I'd consider that. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Paul Wilson, 322 West Ice Street, Belleville. First, I would like to comment on the wonderful service that Belleville had for our veterans last Monday. It was very inspiring and wonderful. Before that service, a service was also held at the Bicentennial Park and I believe our black was raised for the first time in attendance for voice outs and veterans. So it saddens me to say that negativity was posted by a city official on the Bicentennial Park and neighborhood association in regards to that ceremony. I do believe that if you don't have the full contact for our city officials, I hope you have one because it dampened the spirits of the veterans. We have 362 days that out of those, you can give the veterans three days. It is not about politics. It is not about personal views. It is not about what you feel is right or wrong. Those days belong to the veterans and as a part of the service, it was offensive and I did not appreciate it. The word of the month, this month is peace. Our veterans stood up for this, died for this. So give them the respect day to day. God bless our veterans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Mary, on a closed public participation. And I'm going to move into a presentation that I'm very excited about, very happy to give. And I'm going to ask, well, it was name change, Barry Radcliffe, but now it says we've known it for years, but now it's Mary Breuer, I believe, right? And Mary, would you come forward and I'm going to do my best to, we have so much to put on this, pretty smaller than what I, what these old eyes could read. Come to the bill here. On September 2nd, oh, not September, on November 2nd, Lindenwood held their 10th anniversary dinner. And I was planning to be there and as I told Mary about three days ahead of time, the German students that we were working with at the last minute decided to do something for us because they were leaving town on Sunday morning. And I did get there, but Sharon Strasbaugh, who was going, received a very nice, and I wish I'd, if I wouldn't have been so preoccupied today, a very, very nice token of appreciation was presented to us at that formal dinner. It's a beautiful piece and we'll get it on display. We'll try to get it on display in one of the cabinets out here, but it's a beautiful piece commemorating the 10-year, the first 10-year partnership with Lindenwood and the city. So I'm going to let you hold this and I'm going to read the one with the larger print because the eyes aren't quite what they used to be. And I'm very happy tonight, while it's a lot of words that we looked at this, Aaron and I, there wasn't a lot we could cut out because, and there's probably still a lot we forgot. But I'm going to read this proclamation, this very thing. This proclamation states, whereas on November 3rd, 2003, Lindenwood University took ownership of the Belleville West High School campus, and in 2003, the first employee was hired, Mr. Gary Lopez, facility manager, and the first evening classes were offered with 52 students. And whereas in 2004, Mary Radcliffe was named Director of Lindenwood University of Belleville, Roosevelt was given to host accelerated evening programs. Lindenwood College at that time for Individualized Education, ICIE, Mel CIE, and whereas in 2005, a challenge grant of $500,000 was received from Fred and Barbara Kern, allowing the first phase of the auditorium renovation to be completed and the facility was named Lindenwood Auditorium. And Lindenwood University Belleville hosted its first public performance, Civil War Band, that same year. Belleville Main Street named the region between 6th to 28th Street Belleville College history. And whereas in 2006, an agreement was reached with the Illinois State Highway Patrol to construct its regional crime laboratory on Lindenwood University-owned adjacent land to the campus. That land was sold to ISP. Whereas in 2007, James D. Evans, Ph.D., was selected as the new Lindenwood University President. And whereas in 2008, Lindenwood University became a Steinway School by receiving its first Steinway piano and Lindenwood University Belleville was named the Landmark Award by the St. Clair County Historical Society and also granted honorary membership to the Metro East Emergency Response Team. And whereas in 2009, Dr. Jerry Blattick was hired as the first Vice President and Chief Administrative Officer and day classes started in the fall with 100 undergraduate day students that same year. New school colors, green and white, are chosen for the Belleville campus. Men's soccer was introduced, followed by the unveiling of the Belleville campus mascot, The Links. And Lindenwood University Belleville held its first fall convocation ceremony. The first student newsletter was published, The Links Tale, and Lindenwood became a USCAA, United States Collegiate Athletic Association member. And whereas in 2010, day classes increased to 300 students and Lindenwood has its inaugural season for men's and women's basketball, men's and women's cross country, cheerleading and spirit squad, men's and women's golf, women's soccer, men's and women's tennis, and men's and women's volleyball, and held its inaugural Mers Cup Soccer Match. Lindenwood University Belleville versus Swick and the first student organizations formed, Lindenwood Student Government Association, Black Student Leadership Organization, and Criminal Justice Club. And whereas in 2011, day classes increased to 500 students, Lindenwood receives the Commitment to Community Award from Belleville Chamber of Commerce Ambassador Club. The cafeteria building was named U.S. Senator Allen J. Dixon Student Center. The campus was deemed a full-service campus by the Higher Learning Commission of North Central Association Accrediting Organization. Men's soccer and men's golf wins USCAA National Championship and Lindenwood has its inaugural season of men's and women's bowling and inaugural pinning ceremony of Belleville alumni. And whereas in 2012, day classes increased to 800 students and the Belleville campus is approved for NAIA National Association of Intercollegiate Athletics. Remember, in 2012, Lindenwood has its inaugural football and basketball, baseball season and first homecoming week. Lindenwood received the Community Partners Award of Excellence from the City of Belleville Police Department. The Division of Business and Entrepreneurship earns ACBSP Accreditation, Accreditation Council for Business Schools and Programs. And the first play produced by the Theater Department is held, A Christmas Carol. And whereas in 2013, Jerry Blattick was named President of Lindenwood University and day classes increased to over 1,000 students, nearly 2,000 day and evening students in total. Lindenwood University held their first musical production in the Theater Department, Little Shop of Horrors. The first campus graduation was held. The groundbreaking took place on the first women's residence hall. Lindenwood University Belleville was named Member AMC, American Midwest Conference and accepted into the MSFA Mid-State Football Association. Women's softball won the USCAA National Championship and Lindenwood University Belleville opened its communication center. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Belleville, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 10th anniversary of Lindenwood University Belleville with its proud history and bright future in the City of Belleville. Mary, we present this small token and recap of your unbelievable 10-year history. I would be real remiss and I didn't have it in here, but I thought about today, as you and I know, when we first kicked this off, Dr. Spelman was President and he and Mark Kern and my predecessor and Mark involved me real quickly. At that time, I was Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, met with them to really sit down and work out the details to get Lindenwood to accept that campus and to do the great things that we've seen unfold in front of our eyes. So we hope that you can hang this someplace to recap the first 10 years and the next 10 years' history are already being written. Announcement in the paper the other day of the first men's dorm to be built and it just, the story just keeps going. We could be more proud and more appreciative of what Lindenwood has made to offer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. You don't think I'm proud of anything? That's a pretty lengthy story. At this time, I will ask for a brief presentation update from Kenton Keast, collaboration effort by the status and the company heads of plan update. And we have a spokesperson coming forward.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and council members. Good evening. Gary Mitchell with Kenton Keast. As the Mayor said, brief update, but we want to give you an update on where we are in this process, which began in July. We are going through next July, so we're about four and a half months in. And in all these plan updates, we'd like to focus on community and leadership outreach to begin with. So in August, we started with a joint workshop with you and the Planning Commission. In August also, we did a series of discussion groups with members of the community. And then we did a first round of public workshops in September, four locations over two nights. So those were done. And then there's also the online website. That's an ongoing dialogue and we're posting new questions there every week that go along with the topics that we're covering in the plan. So now our focus is really with the Advisory Committee that we're working with on the draft plan. We've had two meetings with that committee so far, looking at the city's demographics, the population outlook for the years ahead, the growth outlook, infrastructure, public safety, all the topics that you deal with immediate, we're looking at down the road. And then also, just very typical issue that you're aware of, infrastructure, economic development, your neighborhoods, so all these pieces of the community, where they're going to be in years ahead. So we're meeting with the committee again this Wednesday evening, but tomorrow night is another community workshop. It's at the PSOP Building on Shirk Street and everyone invited. It's more a hands-on workshop this time. We'll have people in small groups and working around maps with markers, so it's a, it's a more fun exercise this time. And just looking down the road, we have three more meetings, including this week with the Advisory Committee. So we're working toward the March timeframe to come back to you with the overall draft of the plan document. And we'll have a workshop at that point in April and then working toward the summer, as I mentioned, to eventual public hearings and your consideration. So that's where we are and we're moving along and the future, as far as I'm concerned, is very bright from what we're seeing through this process.
Do any council members have any questions for Gary at this time? He and I had a chat here and some of this today, met a little bit and I update, sounds great. I'm very pleased with the process that's going on and just continue to encourage you if you've got upcoming scheduled times together or if there's some public times yet that you can make, we just encourage everyone to give their input because this is what it's about, getting input so they can help us put the plan for the future together. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Okay, we move on to the regular part of the meeting. I've asked for a motion. I think we have in front of you some adjustments to the minutes or some corrections as we talked before they got here tonight. I'd ask for a motion for the City Council Meeting in itself, November 4, 2013.
I'll make that motion with the.
Motion for Alderman Heisler, seconded by Alderman Schmidt, and ask with the corrections that are on your, that are in front of everybody duly noted. Most of them were just typos.
Another one on page one, you're on your, Public Participation, Second Paragraph, Chris Brown, 125, Lucy. Shiloh is going to be put on top here for the hiring.
Should be hearing.
There should be hearing.
Should be hearing, officer. Town's not going to hire anybody. Okay, anything else?
Right on the back page, on page Hayden, page top. After the words "City property" should be a period and then "I" kept like this.
Have I got that? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I did get the correction. I was putting in Alderman Davidson's name, but it didn't say what he wanted to do was bring his lawn mower for sale and his Valentine's candy for his bride. That has nothing to do with city business, so I thought that should be in there.
If you understand, we're not going to go back and go word for word in the minutes. We'll have to hire a court reporter if we're going to put in every translated word. If that has some real bearing.
If you have, if there's a substitute.
Yeah.
BP's work.
Right. So if you have amendment in the second and somebody has some adjustments, you have the right to amend it and I'll recognize that. But if not, we have a motion, we have a second to recognize the changes that were spelled out here. If there's nothing further, all in favor of moving to approve the meetings from the fourth minutes with the amendments, say as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I'd like to go ahead and ask that we would just put the next two items together. Housing report and cash receipts for fiscal year 2013-14 and the Treasuries Report, City of Belleville Funds and Statement of Cash Investments for October 2013. What's your pleasure?
Yeah.
Motion to approve and file. Second. Motion, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion, yes, ma'am?
Yes, on the cash report, you're missing the dog park revenue and the other park page. And that you started to put on the cash account.
Jamie, did you hear that?
No.
She says it's missing the dog park revenue.
And other park. Or maybe I missed it.
Dog park revenue on the housing report?
No, on the cash report.
On the city funds investment, it wouldn't be.
And don't go on there.
There, no.
Okay.
There's nothing for accounts of that.
All right.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve and accept, to accept and file the two reports. All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. I'd like to go ahead and ask that we would just put the next two items together. Housing report and cash receipts for fiscal year 2013-14 and the Treasuries Report, City of Belleville Funds and Statement of Cash Investments for October 2013. What's your pleasure?
Yeah.
Motion to approve and file. Second. Motion, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion, yes, ma'am?
Yes, on the cash report, you're missing the dog park revenue and the other park page. And that you started to put on the cash account.
Jamie, did you hear that?
No.
She says it's missing the dog park revenue.
And other park. Or maybe I missed it.
Dog park revenue on the housing report?
No, on the cash report.
On the city funds investment, it wouldn't be.
And don't go on there.
There, no.
Okay.
There's nothing for accounts of that.
All right.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve and accept, to accept and file the two reports. All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. I'd like to go ahead and ask that we would just put the next two items together. Housing report and cash receipts for fiscal year 2013-14 and the Treasuries Report, City of Belleville Funds and Statement of Cash Investments for October 2013. What's your pleasure?
Yeah.
Motion to approve and file. Second. Motion, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion, yes, ma'am?
Yes, on the cash report, you're missing the dog park revenue and the other park page. And that you started to put on the cash account.
Jamie, did you hear that?
No.
She says it's missing the dog park revenue.
And other park. Or maybe I missed it.
Dog park revenue on the housing report?
No, on the cash report.
On the city funds investment, it wouldn't be.
And don't go on there.
There, no.
Okay.
There's nothing for accounts of that.
All right.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to approve and accept, to accept and file the two reports. All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Alderman Harland, continue.
This next motion is on behalf of the Traffic Committee, is on Union Avenue Park, the roundabout at Route 158 and Route 13. And I think we have the following, approve. Staff to set coordinated internal detours on the city streets to direct traffic as needed for better flow. To establish the no-through truck zones temporarily on Union Avenue and State Street, both sides of Centerville Avenue and other roads as needed. To establish a temporary 20 mile per hour instead of 25 mile per hour. No parking is temporarily on the north side of Union Avenue. Then January 2014 moved to no parking to the south side of Union Avenue. Continue to have the police department monitor the area in questions and to have traffic counts updates. So moved.
Motion for Alderman Harland, second is Alderman Hayden. My only question here is, Tim, can't stop the truck zone on Centerville Avenue. Right?
Your other question is. Motion on Union and State.
We were about going down.
Going down.
Right.
Okay.
Union and State.
Okay. And we'll have to get those, after tonight, we may have to get those signs up. Okay. Police have been working at.
And these, these all came, you know, from.
And my only question is, are the neighbors aware we're going to rotate those no parking on the other side of the street?
Not at this time. We want the staff to, the question is come from some citizens, why isn't it on my side? Why isn't it on their side? And.
The Traffic Committee was.
I just wanted the Traffic Committee to do because Chief Clay went out there and they observed for a couple of days the fact that the side that we put the no parking on had very little parking and the other side had much greater parking.
It's more like most of the houses on the side.
So more, there's more houses on the south side.
Right.
So you're going to have some, you're going to have more people in January going to be upset with that if they didn't know it already. I wasn't at those meetings, so just consider.
The feedback I got was when I read.
So in August, we started with a joint workshop with you and the planning commission. In August also, we did a series of discussion groups with members of the community. And then we did a first round of public workshops in September, four locations over two nights. So those were done. And then there's also the online website. That's an ongoing dialogue, and we're posting new questions there every week that go along with the topics that we're covering in the plan. So now our focus is really with the advisory committee that we're working with on the draft plan. We've had two meetings with that committee so far, looking at the city's demographics, the population outlook for the years ahead, the growth outlook, infrastructure, public safety, all the topics that you deal with immediate, we're looking at down the road. And then also, just very typical issue that you're aware of, infrastructure, economic development, your neighborhoods, so all these pieces of the community, where they're going to be in years ahead. So we're meeting with the committee again this Wednesday evening, but tomorrow night is another community workshop. It's at the PSOP building on Shirk Street, and everyone invited. It's more of a hands-on workshop this time. We'll have people in small groups and working around maps with markers, so it's a, it's a more fun exercise this time. And just looking down the road, we have three more meetings, including this week with the advisory committee, so we're working toward the March timeframe to come back to you with the overall draft of the plan document. And we'll have a workshop at that point in April, and then working toward the summer, as I mentioned, to eventual public hearings and year considerations. So that's where we are, and we're moving along. And the future, as far as I'm concerned, is very bright from what we're seeing through this process.
Do any council members have any questions for Gary at this time? He and I had a chat here, some of this today, met a little bit, and I update, sounds great. I'm very pleased with the process that's going on, and just continue to encourage you, if you've got upcoming scheduled times together, or if there's some public times yet that you can make, we just encourage everyone to give their input, because this is what it's about, getting input so they can help us put the plan for the future together. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Okay, we move on to the regular part of the meeting. I've asked for a motion. I think we have, in front of you, some adjustments to the minutes or some corrections as we're caught before they got here tonight. I'd ask for a motion for the city council meeting to be held November 4, 2013.
I'll make that motion with the...
Motion by Alderman Heisler, seconded by Alderman Schmidt, and that's with the corrections that are on your, that are in front of everybody duly noted. Most of them are just typos.
There's another one on page one around, uh, public participation, second paragraph, Chris Brown, one, two, five, Lucy. Charlie was going to be put on top of you for the hiring...
Should be hearing.
There should be hearing.
Should be hearing, officer. Tom's not going to hire anybody. Okay, anything else?
Right on the back page, on page eight, the top. After the words "city property" should be a period, and then "I" kept like this.
Have I got that? Okay, yes, ma'am.
I did get the correction. I was putting in Alderman Davidson's name, but it didn't say what he wanted to do was bring his lawn mower for sale and his Valentine's candy for his bride. That has nothing to do with city business, so I thought that should be in there.
If you understand, we're not going to go back and go word for word in the minutes. We'll have to hire a court reporter if we're going to put in every translated word. If that has some real bearing...
If you have, if there's a substitute...
Yeah.
BP's work.
Right. So if you have amendment, the second, and somebody has some suggestions, you have the right to amend it, and I'll recognize that. But if not, we have a motion, we have a second to recognize the changes that were spelled out here. If there's nothing further, all in favor of moving to approve the meetings from the fourth minutes with the amendments, say a state that's signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I'd like to go ahead and ask that we would just put the next two items together, housing report and cash receipts for fiscal year 2013-14, and the treasuries report, city of Valvol funds and statement of cash investments for October 2013. What's your pleasure? Motion to approve and file, second. Motion by Alderman Heisler, discussion, yes, ma'am.
Yes, on the cash report, you're missing the dog park revenue and the other park page. And that, you started, you put on the cash account.
Jamie, did you hear that? She says it's missing the dog park revenue.
And other park. Or maybe I missed it.
Dog park revenue on the housing report?
No, on the cash report.
On the city funds investment, it wouldn't be.
Then don't go on there.
There, no.
Okay.
There's nothing for accounts.
All right.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve and accept, to accept and file the two reports. All in favor of accepting and filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. Oral report, second page. Alderman Harland.
Your honor, I'd like to make the, on behalf of the traffic committee, I'd like to make the motion to approve the delete, the no parking on Oneida Place, west side, from thirty feet from the south curve of the driveway for Nine, Oneida Place, to sixty feet south of the same curb line. This was ordered in seven, six, oh, three.
We have a motion to delete. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Hayden, the motion was by Alderman Harland. Any discussion?
There was no parking sign put up there as of last year, and...
Before the renovation.
Before the renovation, and it's no longer needed.
With the renovation, now we solve these problems. We've wired the road so much, okay? We have a motion, and we have a second to have, to approve this motion from the traffic committee, have the proper arguments drawn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Alderman Harland, continue.
This next motion is on behalf of the traffic committee, is on the Union Avenue parking, the roundabout at Route 158 and about thirteen. And I think we have the following approved. Staff to set coordinated internal detours on the city streets to direct traffic as needed for better flow. To establish the no-through truck zones temporarily on Union Avenue and State Street, both sides of Centerville Avenue and other roads as needed. To establish a temporary twenty mile per hour instead of twenty-five mile per hour, no parking is temporarily on the north side of Union Avenue, and then January 2014 moved to no parking to the south side of Union Avenue. Continue to have the police department monitor the area in questions, and to have traffic counts updates. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Harland, second is Alderman Hayden. My only question here is, Tim, can't stop the truck zone on Centerville Avenue. Right?
Your honor, there's a motion on Union and State.
We were going down.
Okay.
Union and State.
Okay, and we'll have to get those, after tonight, maybe we have to get those signs on. Okay, please have been working at...
And these, these all can, you know, are from...
And my only question is, are the neighbors aware we're going to rotate those no parking on the other side of the street?
Not at this time. We want the staff to, the question is come from some citizens, why is it on my side? Why isn't it down on their side? And...
The traffic committee was...
I just wanted the traffic committee to do, because Chief Clay went out there, and they observed for a couple days, the fact that the side that we put the no parking on had very little parking, and the other side had much greater parking.
There's more houses on that side.
So more house, there's more houses on the south side.
Right.
So you're going to have some, you're going to have more people in January going to be upset with that, if they didn't know already. I wasn't at those meetings, so just consider...
The feedback I got was when I relayed that exactly what the why was done was that we must have came out there and looked at different times than when normal cars were there. That's what they told me. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, I can give a little update on the project, too. I talked with IDOT since the traffic committee meeting. Right now, the current phase we're in, where the, the west side of the thirteen is shut off, there's probably another six weeks in that phase, weather-dependent. And the next phase has the west, or the east side of thirteen is going to be closed. So in the next phase, in six weeks, they're going to have the east side and the west side closed. When they closed the, the west side, that was about sixty-six hundred cars that they kind of shut off and caused people to go to Union. On the east side, that's another eighty-six hundred cars. So that's why we have State Street in all these motions.
Both sides.
Yeah, because once we, once we move to closing off the east side, then you're going to have a whole nother scenario with State Street and you have with Union. But I can tell you that IDOT is listening to the city of Valvol, and they are working with their engineer to try and improve the traffic flow on the west side when the next phase starts. So they're running that through their engineer, and without saying anything, I think they're working on something that's going to, that's going to help out. But IDOT is listening.
Mr. Grant, would you, if we had a chance to look at what could possibly be a better internal detour we could provide to the street within our jurisdiction, and maybe communicated that we may want to do that with IDOT, what was their answer?
IDOT was fine with us putting the internal detours on our streets, but it wouldn't necessarily be IDOT's official detour. They would put it on their websites. It would just be something that the city would do on an internal basis to, to help out. And one of those detours that was talked about was at State Street, when they do shut off the, the next phase, is directing people to West Main and Seventeenth Street.
Correct. And I do want to compliment the chief and his staff, your honor, the residents have their happiness. I know you can't be there cheap all the time, but they are quite aware that you are putting as much effort there to, to pull people over that are abusing and speeding down there, especially with the young children at schools, etc., to do that.
It's much improved, much improved, yes.
I have a question about driving this speed limit by five miles per hour. Does it really make a difference, and how will we, what do you think about that?
Well, generally, we know how we drive. You said something, twenty-five people drive up to thirty, thirty-five. So I guess they're really trying to get it down. The complaint that's coming in is speeding, that they are speeding through there, there's a lot of people. They're from this area, so they know how to get through without going to the official detour. So what you have is just a lot of people speeding through there, not just trucks. Our trucks is a big complaint, but most of what we have is speeding. And we're out there monitoring, basically, door speed, the tickets are arriving at door speed. That's why the traffic, the trailers have been out there speeding, has been out there for speed. That's been a big complaint. Now, the question is whether or not twenty is going to help. It's not going to help. But whether it really has an impact, I think all the other things we're doing in addition is really what's going to be going.
I think the chief would agree that during the peak times, which is hour and a half in the morning and the afternoon, the traffic volume there is really significant. So slowing everybody down, especially at the afternoon time, well, most times, there are potential of schoolchildren to be somewhat in the area about the same times as the peak traffic. And it just, it just, what you're really doing is you're stretching the school, twenty mile an hour school zone down the street further during those peak times, because there's, there's, there's children, and there's a lot, a lot more traffic than what the neighborhood used to.
And you, and we got to remember, ladies and gentlemen, there, there's two, two grade schools. You know, you've got Roosevelt within two blocks or so of Centerville Avenue, and you've got Henley Road about four blocks from Centerville Avenue, so...
Okay, so we have a motion, right, and a second to approve this?
Yes.
And that's to have the proper argument drawn. If there's no further questions of these gentlemen or anyone else, all in favor of this motion to have the proper artist drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Alderman Seibert.
Yes, sir. I have four motions to make here, and I'd like to read one, two, and four, and read three out.
Can we do that separate?
Objection.
Okay, let's read one, two, and four first.
To approve force account bill for evacuation wiring in amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and thirty-one cents on Oneida Place. To approve annual testing agreement with Neo Technology Inc. To approve scrapping of new car, of engineering department, a two thousand and one four ground vehicles and a two thousand and three four ground vehicles. So moved, your honor.
Second, Alderman Seibert, seconded by Alderman Hayden, to approve the artists, the, the request, the motions that were just made on page two, one, two, and four. Any additions or corrections? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concello.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Seibert.
That's my motion to approve the engineering agreement with Cascasque Engineering in amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars of the West Belt, like, table two. So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, seconded by Alderman Concello. Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Hayden.
Yes, your honor, as I stated, the traffic, or the streets and grades, my, my concern with this is that the initial phase, this engineering, did not go through an RFQ process, which is a pledge that I had made to the voters and those others, officials there. But one of the delays, as a matter of fact, it was a split tide and a varied break that are in the streets grades, and we wanted to delay this for a month to try to gather information. But the main reason I was voting against is that there is no initial RFQ.
Hey, Mr. Hayden, as I stated there, Casscasque Engineering had done the other phases from west, from Tim's, is correct, from Signal Hill coming in this way. And we've been very satisfied. They were, they've done a good job, there's continuity. And I think there, we talked before, that there was, what's the word you told?
Existing relationship.
An existing relationship, satisfactory relationship that law allows you, that you don't, and like I said, we, we feel very comfortable, and that's why we would go forward. This, this was on the, this was on the agenda from our, this goes back to our budget, right, Tim? I mean, this, this was in the budget, this, these numbers.
It's engineering.
Right, right, we, so we've talked about this for, since last January.
Your honor, I'm going to make sure you're clear. There was no RFQ done with initial engineering.
And we're not, we're not denying that. We, at that time, the staff chose and the council voted on who we believed affirmed at that time, with all the other projects we looked at, all the other work was distributed at that time, and we chose this firm. They have done since, done two phases of this, coming in from Signal Hill School, and it's worked very well and handles some very, you know, challenging communications, et cetera. Alderman Holt.
Okay, so what I think I heard you say was, there was no initial RFQ for this project. You simply picked them, and now you are trying to use a law that says, because we have existing relationships with them, we have to, we don't have to continue to get RFQs.
Mrs. Holt, Alderman Holt, if this council would not have been, you know, I understand that some of you, this is not the first time you, it's, it's the firm was what the problems were here. We have, we have had good success, great success with the work of Casscasque. And, and so when Tim come to me and suggested this, and we talked, why would we not bring that back?
Because this is not private business. This is the government. We do things by the law, and you have screwed it.
No, well, we considered many. Yes, sir.
Your honor, I'd like to mention that an RFQ for the public is a request for cop qualifications. We have done business with this company prior to this project also.
Absolutely.
We know that they're qualified, okay? We know that they're qualified, that they're doing work for us. That means we don't need an RFQ, because it's a request for qualifications. They are very highly qualified at what they do.
Also qualified and recognized by IDOT, which is, which is a big portion of this grant. If they did not have all of IDOT qualifications because of the federal highway money, Tim, am I correct? They wouldn't have been considered.
That is not what my understanding was from committee at all. What he said in committee was, this is a pretty simple thing that any engineering firm can do.
Excuse me, can I add a question? Someone asked, and this was Mr. Hayden, is there any other firm who can do this? And the response was, yes. There may be, and I'd like to comment, there may be other firms out there that say they can do it, but we're dealing with one that already has and has been great for the city to work with. So nobody said that there wasn't anybody else could do it, but we actually have a firm that, since they can do it, they have done it for us, and they've done a good job.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve this engineering agreement with Casscasque. Here are no further questions. I call for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Concello.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Galletti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Ask for a motion to set the date of the joint review board annual meetings for all activity in TIP districts for Friday. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We got the trifles here. Go back here, we got the one on Alderman Heisler made the first call.
D.
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 Fine, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Alderman Sillsby.
Your honor, a motion to approve the low bid from Environmental Consultants and General Waste Services for asbestos removal at Thirty Public Square. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, seconded by Alderman Heisler. Discussion.
Did you find the agreement we have?
No, I can find no written agreement. I've talked, I've talked to Chairman Kern's office, and I talked to Tom Barnett. When we received this building, and the best I can find, I don't know if Dallas probably think a different, it looks like it was, it was in the fall of 2002 was when we received it. I think it might have been a quick claim deed from Rick Holligenstein. I was told at that time that part of the agreement was when we got the building, the building would be given to the city, and that he liked the idea of allowing Martin Square, which was a new, just getting started, it just had come out of the ground, that group to, was proposed, Merrick Kern at that time had proposed that they might use it. They're going to get me, I don't have exactly, but they did invest considerable lot of money on the some remodeling initially, putting in a staircase, and, but we have done things for the building that, such as the air conditioner, we, tonight's the asbestos question, which is not a great big deal, but they have made some of the improvements over the years, and we have done general building maintenance, you know, et cetera.
Okay, I did not research everything on this, but the meeting minutes I did read were the C accepted with, with the first business to the non-campaign. So when did Mr. Holligenstein put any caveat on there that it would take that on the square?
I don't have it ready. I'm just talking to Tom Barnett, Patty Gregory, Mark Kern, that it was apparently offered up, brought to the council, and the council, and I have not had time this week to, to read all those minutes, but I have to believe that somewhere we have a motion, because we have consistently in the budget every year, almost every year, Jamie, is that fair to say, almost every year, we've had a little bit of repairs, or Kenny, through your budget, almost every year, we've had something that's been for our Thirty Public Square for, since 2003 or '02, whenever that all began. It's been no secret, we, we have allowed them and gave them the blessing to use that for a boutique, their office, they used it again this past week for Veterans Day, they've used it for various art show galleries, they've used it to host other, during, Delilah was here in 2010, they've been very good about working with us and using it as a very nice place to host small gatherings, and they've done it to help promote the arts the last, well, this is what was, this is the twelfth Art Square, and, and every council, I think so far, has felt that this was a, a good and just cause, and you can look at what they did.
You're not arguing that, sir. What I'm questioning is why we do not, at this point, when we realize we have great written...
Well, I do have, when Patty Gregory gets back from some business she's taking care of, she and I, Tom Barnett, and Garrett will sit down, and we will propose, look at proposing drafting something. Because I'll be honest with you, I, I thought I was going to find something in the file, but I found nothing yet. Have you found anything?
No.
So apparently, there's nothing, and, and we're going back 12 years ago, and everybody I've talked to said, I don't remember, but I don't think so.
Right, so how was this problem with the asbestos discovered, and how serious an issue is it?
Well, I think, I think Garrett can jump in here. One of the people who, who is kind of the person from Martin Square, who is their building maintenance person, when they have different events in that far, is cleaning up and everything, they don't go down in the basement often, but notice that the pipe, one of the pipes are, there's only, it's not a big, as you can tell from the amount, this is not a big asbestos abatement, because I think it's approximately, but Jamie, almost $6,000 total, Kenny?
Sixty-three hundred.
Sixty-three hundred, so that's not a big asbestos abatement problem. But they saw that some of the wrapping off the old pipes was hanging down. The concern was, if this was asbestos, is there a liability? We immediately had it tested, and it did come back as asbestos wrapped pipes. So far, the report, the certification, the observation of removal, and the removal came to $63,000, which you see here tonight, and, and we feel that the city's liability, once you know it exists, we believe we should take care of it.
Okay, and I'm not arguing that. Can you charge council, is it your intention to work with the parties and come back to the recommendation for a regular rent?
No, it's not my intention. I don't think we should charge a rent. I think when you look at what Martin Square has done for this city, what continues to do for this city, an all-volunteer group that has helped us turn around downtown and, and make this city absolutely back on the map with that premier art show, I, I would be embarrassed at this point to ask them for, to pay rent.
Okay, well, let me put it this way, as it is council-based policy, can I ask the clerk if he's put on an executive meeting, that council will discuss what to do with that building?
Well, that's fine, you know, I, I think we send it to committee.
Which committee?
Oh, I would say, since we don't have a building and grounds committee presently, I would say it probably has to go to finance, because what you're talking about really is whether or not you want to... One of the people who, who is kind of the person from Martin Square who is their building maintenance person when they have different events in that far as cleaning up and everything, uh, they don't go down in the basement often, but notice that, uh, the pipe, one of the pipes are, uh, there's only, it's not a big, as you can tell from the mount, this is not a big asbestos abatement, because, uh, I think it's approximately, but Jamie, almost six thousand dollar total, Kenny?
Sixty-three hundred.
Sixty-three hundred, so that's not a big asbestos abatement problem. Uh, but they saw that some of the wrapping off the old pipes was hanging down. Uh, the concern was if this was asbestos, is there a liability? We immediately had it tested and it did come back as asbestos wrapped pipes. So far, the report, the certification, the observation of removal and the removal came to sixty-three hundred dollars, which you see here tonight, and, and we feel that the city's liability, once you know it exists, we believe we should take care of it.
Okay, and I'm not arguing that. Can you charge counsel, is it your intention to work with the parties and come back with a recommendation for a regular rent?
No, it's not my intention. I don't think we should charge a rent. I think when you look at what Martin Square has done for this city, what continues to do for this city, an all volunteer group that has helped us turn around downtown and, and make this city absolutely, uh, back on the map with that premier art show, I, I would be embarrassed at this point to ask them for, to pay rent.
Okay, well, let me put it this way, as it is councilway policy, can I ask the clerk please put on the next meeting, that council will discuss what to do with that building?
Well, I don't, that's fine, you know, but I, I think we send it to committee.
Which committee?
Um, I would say, since we don't have a building and grounds committee presently, I would say it probably has to go to finance, because what you're talking about really is whether or not you want to continue to see the city, um, invest some of the money in this property to, uh, uh, that we're investing to allow Martin Square to stay in it. So I would suggest that we send it back to the finance.
Is the question, uh, related to rent? Are the question related to an agreement that would, uh, set forth the responsibilities of the parties, you know, rent?
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily, I think whatever the council decides as far as rent, you know, whatever.
I think there's some confusion when you said rental agreement, what the mayor and I had contemplated was sitting down, what I'm talking about, terms of an agreement that would set forth the responsibilities of the parties and, and, and slay the, the city for liability associated with it. Rent is just one of the terms that would have to be discussed and if we can come forward with a, with some, uh, recommendation, but of course, it's against, it's subject of council approval.
I, I see if they want to do some major remodeling, I think that should be spelled out, that's on their ticket, I mean, if it's aesthetics, but I think far as taking care of the building and keeping it safe, it's our building, it belongs to the city, if something ever happens, heaven forbid, where Martin Square is no longer in existence, I would rather have that building come to the city's ownership than go to a committee that's left at that time to determine where that building goes. Alderman Hayden, a couple of questions.
So, the, the goal, the long-term goal is to maintain ownership of this building and use it for that function, is that correct?
I believe that's what this council has, uh, established some time ago from the beginning, and, and certainly this mayor's, uh, belief that that should sus- continue to sustain that, uh, goal.
But, but we don't, I understand correctly, we don't have any type of, any type of agreement?
I can find nothing. We can find nothing. We've looked, uh, we've looked at different places, upstairs and down, I've made contact, I, I've not personally had a conversation with Chairman Kern, but in talking to some of his staff, uh, he does not have a copy of the rule of, this.
I'm sure you're, you're aware, you know, and, and I'm sure we got others, but I know, I know the city of Bellevue has agreement with the, uh, uh, youth organization within the city of Bellevue that, uh, I'm not familiar with, it's, it's a dollar, the rent is a dollar a year, but that organization does have to maintain the property that is owned by the city and, and also provide, you know, liability insurance to protect the, uh, the city, and, and I think something that, that leases we look into, so we.
Well, that's what Garrett and I are gonna talk to them. I mean, I don't, uh, I, I do not pretend to have, I don't know exactly what they, oh, they have spent a, a number of dollars on this building in the past, they have shared in a number of the improvements, but likewise, we have done, uh, things like the roof, now the asbestos, there's certain things that have been, general maintenance of, of a building we own, we have, we have continued to share that, uh, so, you know, this is, I think it needs approved, actually, we put it off this year, but next year we want to take a look at that, so we'll have to have that discussion. But tonight, the, the, the motion tonight is to abate the asbestos at this cost and have this, since now we know it, to take care of the liability. We have a motion and a second, correct?
That's right.
We have any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Silsby.
Motion to approve the workman's comp and liability insurance renewal with Illinois County's Risk Management Trust. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved.
Second, John.
Motion by Silsby, seconded by Heisler. Discussion.
Are these the ones listed in the regulations?
Yes, they should be attached to the regulations.
Roll call.
Heisler.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have a question about, um, the TIP twenty-one Bellevue Engineering Services budgeted by a thousand, but were transferred in under.
Yes, that came from this council last time, you guys wanted it to be a loan from three instead of paid by three.
Okay, thanks.
I remember that. Motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now, my eyes are adjusted, I'd ask for a motion to set the date of the Joint Review Board annual meetings for all active TIP districts for Friday, December twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, at the respected times listed in the attached memo.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Consola, seconded by Alderman Heisler. Uh, yes. My concern with this is, is having them through the day and, uh, only on one day really doesn't give anybody a general hope, there's a good chance they won't understand. Um, we've, we've listened in the last several years, we held them at some different times, we've had, uh, with the exception of one or two of our regular attendees here at council, came the first year or two, and you're yourself included. Last year, Eric.
Uh, when we did hold them in the evenings, we had actually less attendance than when we hold them every day.
And, and after talking to the TIP districts, the school districts and everyone, and, and when the attendance last year, we had virtually, many of you didn't come the second year, you went through the whole process the first year, attendance last year was a very, very small handful.
Two weeks last year?
The date last year?
It was in, uh, December, I believe, or late November.
Late November.
So around the holiday, and again, you're scheduling around the holiday, and you're surprised people don't show up?
We, we, we were trying to be, to make sure that no one was upset that we didn't put, we talked about this, but I said if we put it up to January, I could be criticized because we waited too long. But we just got everything filed, Jamie, we couldn't do it until everything was sent to the controller and everything, and, um, and, and we just sat down recently and we picked this date. Um, so, I can tell you, we've had very little participation, the taxing bodies have asked to have them during the day, and, and there's virtually been, I, I don't know, Eric, you have to go through the sheets, last year, we had what? Four people maybe came?
Somewhere around there.
And, 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 and they, and, and that was mostly of the group that's here tonight. Mostly was Alderman, and Mr. White, you, you were here, you agree?
Yes, sir.
The attendance was not, we, we, we have tested this now, I have listened, and we have tested this for several years. Uh, this is the third year we've done it, right, Eric? And, and, and the first year, we had several of you came, there was one or two other people like Mr. Hager and a few others, but I don't think we had, did we have anybody we didn't know from the public that came in?
None.
None. None. And, and, and we did them again last year, and I think one or two of you came in for a few minutes under TIP three and then left, and nobody came the rest of the day. And that, Mr. White, is that pretty much reflected?
Very lonely.
It was very lonely. It was very lonely, and, and that's from an independent, so he's, I didn't, I didn't coerce it. Uh, I, I think that, you know, we just said, so now we've listened to the TIP, the TIP districts who are giving up their whole day to be here, to be cooperative with our mandate from the law, and, and they've just announced that we do it during the day and we do them in one day, and, and we accomplish the goals that set out by statute. So, we have a motion here to approve this date, if there's, uh, if there's no further objection, I ask for a motion, all in favor, to signify by saying aye, for motion F to approve December twentieth date.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Give me a roll call, let's get it clear, who's, who's voting for what?
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Present.
Excuse me? The eyes have it. Okay, the next motion, I'd ask for a motion to nominate Tom Peters as the public member, member nominee for the Joint Review Board Annual Meeting for All Active TIP Districts to be held Friday, December twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. Do I hear motion?
So moved, John.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Heisler. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
No.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Silsby.
Motion to approve the Resolution thirty-one fifty-one. So moved.
Again, like before, Silsby made the motion, Heisler made the second. Um, discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Silsby would make the next resolution?
A motion to approve the Resolution thirty-one fifty-one. So moved.
Second, your honor.
Again, like before, Silsby made the motion, Heisler made the second. Um, discussion, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewoods.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider. Main, Third, and Third and C. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Cybert, second, who is the second, second by Alderman Silsby. Uh, just a little bit of explanation, we've never had the opportunity to host this parade before, we've hosted a shrine parade for seventy years, is that all right? Uh, they've been present providing the shrine parade to the city and our children, et cetera, for about seventy years now. They've had this parade in other cities throughout this, this region. They've asked that we would consider, because what they're trying to do is bring, I guess, the conference into this area. Someday, we're gonna have a conference center, we get the whole thing, but this will bring visitors to the Bellville area and to Bellville specifically as well. And uh, they've asked to do this and they spell out the map in there, so we have a motion and we have a second. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
How does this relate in time to other events in the region that can mark total festivals?
There, there's nothing on that day, on that given day, the Oktoberfest for the two hundred will be the following weekend. And this parade is, as you know, it's, it's even, this is, this, this parade gets down like to one of the early parades of the, of the, of the Saint Patrick's Day. It's basically just going around the block. There won't be a lot of, need for a lot of support. It's, it's, it's Third Street to the, oh, to the pub, Third, three blocks to the square, three blocks to C Street and back.
And what about the car show? Is this as close, I mean, this is the Saturday around September fifteenth?
The car show is not, in fact, the car show that we're planning for the two hundred will be at Mr. Joseph's out in Frank Scott Park, uh, a Bellville crossing. He's, he's hosting it and he's requesting for the two hundred to do that out of his location. We're gonna probably cross off, and he's probably, the request is probably gonna come in to maybe cross off part of Bellville West Parkway alongside the Wagner site, the old Wagner site over there, so that they, they wanna do a barbecue and a car show out there. And that, that's, I don't even know the exact date yet, but I know, we've been working on it. So, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I ask for a motion to read by title only Resolution thirty-one fifty and Resolution thirty-one fifty-one. Motion by Alderman Silsby, second by Alderman Heisler. Right here in the discussion, all in favor of reading my title only signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Resolution number thirty-one fifty, a resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Bellville all year long for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May two thousand thirteen and ending on the thirtieth day of April two thousand fourteen.
A motion to accrue thirty-one fifty, second by, motion was by Silsby, second was by Heisler. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Silsby would make an extra resolution?
A motion to approve Resolution thirty-one fifty-one. So move.
Second, your honor.
Again, like before, Silsby made a motion, Heisler made the second. Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Snyder.
Motion carries. Arden says we actually have none this evening. Unfinished business, does anybody have any unfinished business? Yes, ma'am?
What is the status of the sidewalk on these portions?
I don't know.
Still waiting here for the business owner. We, we have an agreement sent over to him for his approval on the, on the design.
I know, you met with IEDAT again, he met with IEDAT?
He says to sign off.
Okay. Design.
Let's, let's be, ask, ask, when are we gonna go live?
You know, when I tried to get that answer today, and I wish I would have, well, Mary might not have known, I will ask, uh, it, I told you last meeting, we're waiting on, we were waiting, and I thought we'd start, but I'll cross my fingers and hope for the December second meeting. We were waiting on some final parts for Charter meeting. It was their hangup now, we've got everything installed, they've got everything at Lindenwood, they're up and running, in fact, I went out and filmed a little thing Charter did with all the mayors for the holiday coming up, I was out there, their systems, their, their studio's great, uh, but it's a Charter thing, but I'm, I was told it was like anytime, so I'll follow up and find out where that's at, but it should be, I'm hoping we're starting in early September, December now.
And also, you haven't given an update, uh, where we stand on the COPS grant?
COPS grant is, I talked to Congressman Inyard's office this week, as I told you, we did not make the first round, as the chief and I explained, uh, the last time we got the COPS grant, it was when people turned it down, that they came back around, they have not had adequate time yet to find out, I guess they get so much time once they're notified to say they're going to accept and execute the grant. Uh, Congressman Inyard's office told us that they were going to, uh, told me last couple days I talked to him, actually, I talked to him on Thursday, that they're going to, uh, research and see if any monies were turned back that we still had a shot at. Once I know that we're out of that round, uh, then we will have further discussions of, uh, budget, you know. As we told you also, uh, the next person on our list, we can't get anybody in until the January class, right, Chief?
Correct.
So, we're trying to wait a little bit patiently and see if anything else happened with the COPS grant, in the meantime, we're evaluating, uh, the finances some more and, and we'll be coming back to finance, uh, police department will do a recommendation once we get those facts. Alderman Schmidt.
Uh, two questions, Your Honor. Do we know when the crime lab is opening? Is it given a date?
I was told May of two thousand fourteen, but they told me they would get more specific. The good news is, they're making good time now and they pretty well got it all buttoned up for the winter, windows are pretty much in and everything, so my belief is now, the weather won't stop them from continuing great progress, but understand, awful lot of the detail work is inside that building. Uh, there's so much stuff that goes on, uh, to make that facility, what state of the art it's gonna be, so, I was told, uh, I was told around September, uh, November eighth.
The second question was on the women's dorms, do we know the thing about women's dorms?
Ribbon's dorm's gonna open September first.
Are they gonna have a ceremony?
They're gonna, they'll let us know, but there's gonna be a ribbon cutting, uh, I would say in the next couple of weeks, I do not have a date yet, does anybody here know a date? So, and, and then I, you saw the paper the other day, they announced the, the first men's dorm is gonna be constructed, uh, and, and it looks like that's going to be constructed the way I, the word I got, has anybody read it differently? I asked the newspaper reporter where the church was, and they act like it's gonna be open next fall, right? I think, well, your paper reported it. But I think that was what I read, so, um, uh, they, they, they're gonna be getting going, I think, very quickly. Originally, when I talked to them, couple of months ago, they acted like that that dorm wouldn't be announced until maybe summer, but their, their, the board of directors, I think, surprised them and is spending the money, uh, quicker. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, do you know, I'm putting you on the spot here, how many people's gonna work in that, uh, crime lab? I'm asking you because, uh, traffic has an issue with some of those.
Well, traffic is gonna be an issue, not so much on how many people work there, Jim, I mean, Emily, do you remember the number by chance? I, I would say it's only like forty when it's, it's, it's not, but the numbers of employees, but where the traffic come is gonna be big, Jim. You're gonna, they're closing the Carbondale, the way I read it, but the governor actually told me the last time he was here, they're closing the Carbondale crime lab when this one is open. So, everything basically south of Springfield or, or at least Route seventy south, the whole state, is going to, evidence and, and specimens are gonna be brought to Bellville. So, where the traffic, I think, is gonna come, is gonna be all the various police agencies and individuals who will frequent that la- lab, whether it be as experts or dropping off stuff, picking stuff up. Now, the good news for the city is, there's gonna be a lot of police cars frequenting Bellville that aren't our police cars, and we're not paying for them, but we're gonna have a lot of extra cops presence, uh, at that side or in and around that part of town, so, that's one of the reasons we worked hard to get that lab.
I'm just asking the question because I'm on the track. And we're gonna be addressing issues.
I think we're gonna need a light at that intersection in the not-too-distant future, and Lindenwood feels the same way.
The ribbon's darn down there is a hundred feet.
Right, I, I, I understand. And the one across the street's gonna be the same, built where the church was, so, that area is going to increase in traffic tremendously. Yes, ma'am?
We might really consider, uh, what Stuart brought up about a crosswalk or something, because I know driving through there, we just drove through there Saturday, and I was astounded at that amount of traffic of kids with iPods on walking across the street. You have to get them trained.
We've gotta be careful, but, and we've got a long way to go, but, but that, that is going to continue to grow, and it's, it's amazing.
Could we reopen the tunnel?
Now, the tunnel's filled in, we can't reopen that tunnel, but we can, but we'll have to just watch in the future what it brings, you know? Nice problem. Yes, ma'am?
I imagine this is the correct way to do it, but I wanted to raise your attention, there have been several times lately on several different committees where things were either tabled from a previous month that have forgotten to be put on the agenda, or someone said to council, to a committee, that it did not get put on the agenda, and I'm not sure of the problem we had handled.
Well, they were tabled at council, clerk should be noting it and getting it back to the various committees or to, you know, and we, and that should be a reminder, but if, if you know it, you gotta just, if you, if you know there's an item that got tabled, please call my office and remind me. You know, I-
You know, I got, I, I hate working these, but I got a bit of a worry for traffic that came in because council had sent something back to the traffic committee that involved my neighborhood, but it had not been put on the agenda, so they really couldn't handle.
Okay, and that, you know, that is a combination of, I asked the staff to do their due diligence, I asked all the chairman, but, you know, if it came here from the council, we tabled or something here and sent it back, then we gotta make sure that we-
But it also happened in order of the people, that some of those tables did not get put on the agenda, and happened earlier issues in races that some of them had.
We've been very busy, so we're gonna have to help each other, and we'll try to do better.
Okay, well, and, one thing we did discuss in order of the meeting was the possible hiring of somebody coming in doing, um, training on public initiatives.
There's been no motion yet.
Right, and there's not, and I-
Obviously, you still got some research. Well, I think until it comes to, from committee, that's a, that's truly an ardent and, and legal, uh, committee topic, that if there's something comes out of there, a substance that comes to the council, then we should entertain it.
Okay, um, and I did, I heard something mentioned recently about the public access calendar, uh, councils, I wanted to ask the board, do we have letters from the attorney general about things that have been?
We do, we do have several under view, but Mr. Horner has, has responded those, and we're, we're looking at all of them.
Um, I also asked a question recently that you and I discussed that probably would have been more appropriate personnel committee. When I searched the city website today, I looked at the one, the next personnel committee, it's scheduled for December.
I told you, I told you when we talked, if you want to request, the personnel committee only meets, hasn't needed. If you wanted to request that, but I explained to you that I could tell you, uh, and really probably could tell you in executive session to personnel, I can't tell you people's medical situations for HIPAA reasons. Uh, you know, when I, and I, but I explained this in pretty much detail to you, but if you want to pursue that particular situation or any other employee, uh, you just make a request from me, send me an email, and I'll have a personnel meeting. If that is something that you think, you know, but obviously, a personnel's gonna go into executive section, and I'm gonna hopefully try to schedule that when the attorney can be present, and then we can, uh, handle it accordingly and justly. Okay, and many, many times personnel, that could mean representation from the unions as well, so we gotta, you know, duly notify all people. Okay, anything else under unfinished miscellaneous new business? The only thing I wanna say, I'm gonna get one in here, under, I guess it's miscellaneous, basically, or unfinished, not unfinished, it's happened, but I, I just too wanna add my thank you to everyone who, who in here and others who were not here tonight, who made this year's Veterans Day program a great success. I, I personally wanna thank Dr. Silsby and Garrett, I thought the base commander did a great job, uh, the music, everybody, but, you know, a lot of people behind the scenes, parks, the fire department, the street department, police department, there's a lot of moving parts to make that work, and I, I just wanna say thank you. The commander at the base, I was with again Thursday evening, and, and he came up to me, he said, you know, I've been to ceremonies all around the country. And his wife stood there and said, this was one of the nicest moments we've ever been involved with and witnessed, it was very professionally done, very tasteful, and he just couldn't say enough about, uh, how well it came off, so I thank everybody, and I encourage everyone to try to attend next year's. Okay, at this time, motor fuel claims the amount of four thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman White, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Motion carries, I'd like to ask for a motion in executive session to discuss, uh, I don't know if we had any personnel, uh, personnel litigation and property acquisition. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, that was not intentional by any means. I guess I'm just trying to get, get over. B. I apologize. Discussion of censure of Alderman.
Yes, Your Honor, I ask this to be on the agenda, I have asked a question to the uh, city attorney, he responded, uh, to us, uh, it was on people's desk, uh, uh, Mr. Horner, can you give a little more explanation into your opinion as to how this works?
Section three point one one dash forty dash fifty in the Illinois Municipal Code provides for city councils determining their own rules of proceeding as it relates to punishment of its members, uh, based on their conduct, and it provides for a two-thirds vote, uh, you could expel an Alderman from a meeting, uh, for such misconduct, but not a second time for the same incident. Your section two dash two dash one, uh, double D of your council rules incorporates that, but it, it goes on to be a little, uh, more specific as to the nature of the, of the conduct, and it says that any member acting or appearing to elude or disgraceful manner, or who would use appropriate obscene or insulting language to or about any member of the council, or who does not obey the order of the chair, shall be on motion censured by a majority vote of the members present, or expelled by a two-thirds vote of all members elected. And reading those, uh, it talks about, uh, members being present and the, the idea of the potential expulsion of a, of a member based on the conduct, it's my opinion that the action to be taken, if there is an action suggested, should be taken contemporaneous with the alleged misconduct, um, which would mean at the same meeting. And I think the, the reason is, based on the, on the express, uh, language in both the statute and the ordinance, and also because, uh, if there's going to be an action taken, I think logic would dictate that it would be done contemporaneously, because otherwise, these rules could be manipulated to expel somebody from a later meeting for a reason other than misconduct.
Thank you. Your Honor, I wanna take you back to the, uh, October twenty-first, thirteen meeting, and, and I just wanna ask you for, for my edification, uh, the junior Alderman for Ward Two ready to make a statement, were you aware that she was going to, uh, make a statement to that effect before that meeting?
I would, if, just so everybody knows, and I know I've done this before, I wanna make the city council aware, that if your discussions are going to turn to a specific Alderman, you have the ability to address this matter in executive session under section two C three of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, and I would recommend that you do so if your discussions are gonna turn to a specific Alderman.
Mr. Mayor? I'm basically looking, uh, at, at, basically, uh, Your Honor, uh, what, I just wanted to know if, if you knew such a statement of Batman two was gonna be made that night? And I assume-
I, I, if, you're, you're saying was orchestrated?
Yes.
I, I, no. I had no idea.
Okay. Obviously, Your Honor, that the, I could see from, from the ruling, from the, uh, city attorney, uh, that, uh, uh, nothing, uh, could be able to be done per se, but, uh, Your Honor, the, the statement, uh, it was written from a parent's statement, and, and, uh, I, I think it was done to, to evoke a malice of me. I wanna ask the, uh, city attorneys, because we look at these rules, what, what role does the chair play in, in, in trying, when we had the discussion with public portion, they were, there was some objections, where people, uh, were, were, uh, naming Alderman or, or yourself, or, you know, where is the role of chair and, and, and the role of this council when we deviate from discussion of issues and we turn it into personal statements that cannot be backed?
Well, I think, I think the role of the, of the chair as a moderator, uh, would, it would be, if somebody raises point of order, that, you do have rules currently in your council rules that address this, but, um, I, I believe and I've recommended that both with public participation and communications amongst and between the, uh, council that we, that we aim to improve stability, but you, you know, stability can be improved, uh, without formal rules as well, but, uh, I do believe it's something that we've discussed, I've, I've been present at ordinance and legal, uh, committee meetings, where we've discussed it first in the context of public participation, and, uh, I anticipate that, that there will be proposed, uh, rules related to that to improve stability at the council meetings, but, uh, again, that discussion could also turn to, uh, communications among and between the council members during their deliberations, of course.
I just want to, for the record, Your Honor, and, and ladies and gentlemen out there, I, I wanna take you back to the debate on, on March twenty-sixth, uh, twenty thirteen, at the Lindenwood University, as I told you in your office, Your Honor. The last question that was asked of, uh, the three candidates was basically what you believed were the good and the bad things of various candidates, and, uh, ultimately, uh, I was the only one that answered the, uh, question in full, and I, I stated that night, Your Honor, that I, I had some misgivings in relation to the way I felt you, uh, micromanaging certain things, and I evidenced that, uh, with, uh, attending various committee meetings, uh, voting in committee meetings, which I had never seen before of any mayor before, I also stated my concerns with Mr. Elmore's lack of manager experience, but I stated about you both, Your Honor, both you and Mr. Elmore, that I've never questioned your honesty, compassion, concern for this city, and that is why it still disturbs me that on the twenty-first, that the junior Alderman from Ward Two makes an accusation that basically states that I had said that you were dishonest, were engaged in malfeasance, and I don't think a reasonable person would believe that, and, um, I don't believe she can come up with a credible and non-biased person that can support that. When I say credible and non-biased, my wife is a very credible person, but I certainly can't argue that she wouldn't be, uh, certainly, uh, would have some bias in my favor, and my goal tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I wanna make it very, very clear that, uh, and those also associated me that were implicated in this, that I never made such a statement. I have tried to exhaust all remedies, asking the Alderman to make a statement to retract it, which was not, uh, done. I do want to, uh, have your, uh, one page of, of, uh, your statement, Mr. Horner entered it to the record, and I also respectfully ask, uh, that my statement that I put out, uh, Your Honor, on October twenty-second, twenty, uh, thirteen, uh, uh, basically, uh, entered into the record, because, uh, I think this body needs to know, you know, we can entered into the record, because, uh, I think this body needs to know, you know, we can sit there and debate all night on issues, and I think that's good. I think that's good, Your Honor. You know, Thomas Jefferson, third president of the United States, John Adams, second president of the United States, they didn't get along. Sometimes they were bitter individuals, but they helped shape the foundation and principles of this country that we are now working for. But I don't believe those two men sat there and attacked each other on the city council, and I have to defend myself, and I'm also doing it, brother. You can see they're not doing it for you, and I thank you.
Alderman Schneider?
The only, the only question is, in the statements that's harmful to me and my fellow independents. I am an independent. I helped that campaign a lot, and if she meant it against me, I wish she would've said the names that were in, in this, and not just say independents, because when you say independents, that means every one of us independents. And I have never accused you of using money illegal or any other way. Yes, I crap about the park and that, but I do it openly in to say the statements were harmful to me, my fellow independents and backers, the only council as a whole. I have never done anything illegal like that, and if somebody wants to say something about me, I want them to say it to my face, not out in the public when they don't know what they're talking about.
Mr. White?
Although I, I agree with, uh, Alderman Hayden, I never heard anything he said. I, I think we're getting a little bit personal in this, and I think maybe we oughta back off a little bit and go into the next session, because we started to have this, uh, I would, I would agree.
I think we're kinda starting to cross the line here, I agree. So, if there's nothing else now, we, uh, yes, ma'am?
I have a question, um, about the future. We received our automatic technical first day, it's worth carrying on there. The attorney communication was well opened with Wednesday, so I'm questioning why I was supposed to make a decision or not make a decision based on the legal.
I can explain that. Uh, Mr. Hayden emailed that request to D. Cook at bellville.net. Unfortunately, my email is D.B. Cook at bellville.net, and that's why I highlighted there on the front, and just a note for everyone, if you've ever sent me correspondence to D. Cook at bellville.net, although it does, does not come back undeliberate, it does not come to me. So, exactly.
That's an error to me. Why did you not receive this information from the city attorney?
I do not know.
It was a, a question directed at me by Alderman Hayden and Alderman Gletty, so I responded to their inquiry.
Okay, I see that, but it affects very much because it was the sample that was due to the city.
Well, I, I would need to, I would need to have direction if I'm going to, to respond to an inquiry from, from an individual Alderman. If you want the policy to be to copy it all, that, then I need to be sort of right.
No, you're telling me in the, I can't do anything, they don't know.
No.
And I don't understand that at all.
No, that response was actually sent before the agenda. It was put on there, I think, at the request of Alderman Hayden as a topic, but the response itself, when I sent it, it was in a response to a specific inquiry from Alderman Hayden and Alderman Gletty, that I had no idea. I, yes, I researched it, but I didn't realize when I sent.
Could you let me finish your sentence, please?
When, when I, when I responded to it, was in the context of responding to a specific inquiry, I had no idea that it was gonna be a matter of, of topic for a, uh, city council meeting.
So can we go ahead, or are we gonna wait?
Hang on. We're, we're gonna go, if we're done with this particular topic in open session, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel litigation and property acquisition. Do I hear that motion?
Yes.
Who made the motion? Alderman White made the motion. Who's second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of going into executive session for the expressed, uh, reasons as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we have the attorney for the Workman's Comp stay. Uh, is there any other staff persons that I said to stay? Everybody? Yes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in open session. We have, as stated by the, the, um, item D on the agenda under seventeen, I'm gonna ask, there's motion for Workman's Comp settlements, settle, there's actually two of them. I'm asking, first of all, for a motion to approve, uh, settlement of litigation with Workman's Comp. The first one is for six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Do I hear a motion to settle the first case? Our Alderman Ridgewood's, the second by Alderman Schmidt. Everybody understands that was the first case discussed by the attorney who presented, uh, we have a motion, we have a second to settle on that first one for that amount. No discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
First motion passes. Second motion, I'd ask for approval of a settlement, as stated in the executive session by the attorney, uh, the second case, the settlement amount would be for twenty-six thousand ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman White. Do I hear discussion on that second case? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is money gonna collect these?
Yeah, listen, if we don't mind.
Oh, yes.
I, I, I'd like to have it back. I really would. I'd, I'd like if we could collect them if we missed.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to, you tell me why you don't stop.
Once you come up tomorrow, it's not a really, that way we don't have, you feel better. You can't say that anything leaked out from you. If you're the only method copy, you know, it's up to.
It's up, it's up to the.
It's up to individual. If you insist that you have it, but everybody else, let's collect them if we want. If you're willing to collect them, I'd like to collect them. Okay. Okay. I have now, I'm asking, Garrett's gonna phrase it, and I'm asking someone to make this motion.
If you would consider a, uh, motion authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement and release a form approved by the city attorney?
So, motion by, motion by Alderman Randall, second, signify by who? Second was by Alderman Cybert. Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consola.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood's.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Gletty.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.